It is, can I have your attention, please? Okay, today is Tuesday, September 16, 2025, at 5:34 PM. And this is our City Council Special Meeting at the Council Chambers here at City Hall. We do have a forum with Councilman Garcia, Councilman Diaz, Mayor Pro Tem Davis, Councilwoman Ramon, and myself. And can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And we have Mr. Brian Cisneros for a moment of silence with Access Church.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, and distinguished leaders of our great city. I want to take a moment to thank Mayor Valdez for putting God first and for having the courage to begin these meetings with prayer. This is more than a tradition, it is prophetic. It carries a deep spiritual significance because it acknowledges that unless the Lord build a house, the builder's labor in vain. And in light of the challenges our nation and world are facing, there has never been a more urgent time for us to call on God together in prayer. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you with gratitude for this day and for the opportunity to serve the people of Eagle Pass. Your Word says in Proverbs 16:3, "Commit your actions to the Lord, and your plans will succeed." Tonight, we place the plans, decisions, and future of our city into your hands, asking you to establish them according to your perfect will. Lord, I lift up our mayor, every council member, and all who serve this community. Grant them wisdom, discernment, and courage to lead with integrity and justice. Cover them with your peace and guide them with your truth. Father, we pray for unity in Eagle Pass in the midst of a divisive time. Heal wounds, bridge divides, and bring us together as one people under God. As your Word declares in 2 Chronicles 7:14, "If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray and seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, forgive their sin, and heal their land." Lord, heal our land and heal our city. We also pray your hand of protection over our first responders, police officers, firefighters, EMS, and all who are called to serve and protect our city. Guard those who protect our schools and our borders. Cover them with your safety, strengthen their families, and remind them that their labor is not in vain. We proclaim tonight that Jesus Christ is Lord over Eagle Pass. May our city be a beacon of light, a city set on a hill for others to see, a place where faith, family, and freedom flourish. Let Eagle Pass shine as an example of hope and blessing to our region and beyond. God bless Eagle Pass, and God bless the United States of America. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I also want to bring and inform of the passing of Ms. Regina Aviles, Regional Director for Eagle Pass with Congressman Tony Gonzalez. Okay, thank you. Now we have for our communications and recognitions, we have Alfredo Sanchez.
Good afternoon, Mayor Valdez, City Council members. My name is Alfredo Sanchez, a leader with the Border Organization and a concerned citizen. We're here to address the issue of the expansion of the Camino Real International Bridge. It makes zero sense, zero fiscal sense, to once again delay the expansion of the bridge by perhaps rebidding the bridge design. If the concern of some of the City Council members is that the, that Coahuila was not included in the selection panel to recommend a design company, please rest assured, though Coahuila is once again encouraging the City Council to take the lead on the selection. Allow me to read the following. This letter is dated June 24, 2025, addressed to the Mayor Valdez. Therefore, I respectfully request that during the upcoming meeting with the City Council, you consider authorizing the city of Eagle Pass to lead the procurement process for the comprehensive design of the project as a whole, starting on the U.S. side and concluding in Piedras Negras on, on the land that has been appropriately conditioned for the infrastructure deployment. I would also like to reiterate the commitment of the government of the state of Coahuila to cover the portion of this design cost corresponding to the Mexican side. It is signed by Manolo Jimenez Salinas, Governor of Coahuila. The city of Eagle Pass exercised due diligence by establishing a selection panel. The panel did the research, met with the bidders, and is recommending the best architectural design company. We, the taxpayers, are asking you, the elected officials, to do your job, award the bid to the recommended company, LJA. Enough with the delays, without any merits. We need the action and demand the accountability. That's all. Thank you.
We have Mr. Thomas Carey.
Good afternoon, Mayor Valdez and City Councilmen. I am Tom Carey. I was born in Eagle Pass in 1946. I've been here all of my life. I love Eagle Pass. I'm one of the members of the Border Organization. I'm very concerned about our, the future of our community. We believe that enough time and money has been needlessly spent on, on the expansion of Camino Real International Bridge. As my colleague before me has stated, this project initially was supposed to cost taxpayers $20 million, and now we're probably looking at something close to $50 million, if not more. Enough is enough. Award the bid for the design of the bridge to LJA. This company was recommended by a council, by the city committee that you, the city of Eagle Pass, put together. The city put a recommendation process in place that that process needs to go forward with LJA. Now do your job as the elected officials and award the bid, and let's move on. Much-needed expansion. We need no more delays. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ricardo Calderon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council, and dear fellow citizens and taxpayers. My name is Ricardo Calderon. I'm here as a private citizen, as a taxpayer. I'm here with regard to Agenda Item Number 13, which is the discussion and consideration for approval of the audit for the year 2024, which the City Council approved a change of auditing firms in July without all of the facts. And we have reviewed the proposed audit report from our City Finance Director and the accounting firm that was subsequently hired, and we find some major discrepancies with the report that is being presented to the City Council today for approval. We estimate that there's approximately about $8.5 million that are actually not line item or particularly meticulous, meticulously described, that just lumped some into a single category. There's a category of about $20 million, and the audit that's being presented accounts for about $12.5 million of it, but there's another $8.5 million that is not being accounted for. Secondly, the audit does not discuss anything having to do with the infamous music, Highway 57 Music Fest loss that the city incurred of $2.3 million, which we, the taxpayers, are being asked to incur. And I don't see anything in that audit report that specifically details or outlines where those $2.3 million are being taken into account or consideration. And it raises a lot of red flags to us, the taxpayers. We work very hard in our businesses, with our families, and we want a quality of life to be improved in this community. Well, we can't do that when there is a lack of transparency. This administration and City Council has made its priority a transparency, and we just don't see it. There's a lot of talk about transparency, but we don't see the walk. You can talk the talk, but you can't walk the walk. We, the taxpayers, find it unacceptable to have an audit that is not fully detailed and complete. We're going to recommend to the City Council that at today's meeting it not be approved. This was actually attempted to be approved within 45 days after the awarding of the changing of the auditing firms. I think that we need to do a more fine-tooth comb. We count, we look towards you, the City Council, to do your due diligence and to our staff here at City Hall, our City Manager, our Assistant City Manager, and our City Finance Director, who are in charge of this audit, to look at it more closely. We just can't sweep old matters under the carpet or under the rug. We gotta ask the tough questions. So I'd like to recommend that we not approve it today, since it's not actually part of the budget itself. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now we have our National Security Officers Appreciation Week. So this is a proclamation of the city of Eagle Pass, whereas security officers play a vital role in safeguarding communities, court faces, schools, public spaces, often working behind the scenes to ensure safety and peace of mind. And whereas these dedicated professionals serve with integrity, vigilance, and courage responding to emergencies, determining crime, and providing assistance with professionalism and compassion. And whereas security officers contribute to the overall well-being of our society by maintaining order, protecting property, and supporting law enforcement efforts. And whereas their commitment to duty often requires long hours, exposure to risk, and unwavering the attention to detail, all in the service of others. And whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize the honor, the contributions of security officers, and express our gratitude for their essential service. Now therefore, I, Mayor Valdez, Mayor of the city of Eagle Pass, Texas, do hereby proclaim September 21st to the 27th, 2025, as National Security Officers Appreciation. Thank you so much for all the dedication and dedication. If you all want to sit down in the first, we can all fit in one picture. Do you want to say a few words?
I just want to thank our security team. They're an extension of our police department. Sometimes the work that they do helps us a lot. We do have securities that are assigned here to City Hall, the library, the RISK in building, and who else am I?
Patrol.
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 And patrol, yes. So they patrol all the parks here in our community. So a big thanks to all of y'all for what you do, and our, the police department and the city appreciates all the work that you all do. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have our public hearing of the adoption of the tax rate of .40 per 100 of value for the tax year 2025. And the tax rate will provide revenue for the general fund and debt service. The rate includes .284257 per 100 of the value of maintenance and operation, and .195795 per 100 value of the interest and sinking fund of the debt service, and is estimated to generate a tax levy of $11,970,240. And it's 5:51, and it's open.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. The proposed tax rate for 2025 is .480052 over $100 value, with an MNO of .284257 over $100 value, and INS of .195795 over $100 value. There's no tax rate increase. This is the same tax rate as last year. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Now it's open to the public. So it's 5:51 PM, and now we close this. Do you want to make a motion? Okay, can someone please entertain a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Councilman.
Oh, to close, right?
Yes, it's closed.
Oh, motion to close.
Yeah. Motion by Councilman Garcia. Do I have a second?
A second?
Second by Councilman Diaz. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion passes. Now we move to our consent agenda items. Are there any discussion? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Diaz. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Ramon. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion passes. Now we're going to move to Item 16, Consideration and Possible Action on Awarding or Rejecting of Request for Qualifications for 2025-028 Design Service for Camino Real International Bridge Expansion to LJA, and authorize City Manager to negotiate and execute agreement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, this item was tabled last week. You know, just a rundown of things that happened, you know, that led ultimately the panel to make this recommendation is the city issued the RFQ to secure the design services for Camino Real International Bridge Expansion project. A total of three firms submitted qualifications. All three firms were reviewed and scored by the evaluation panel. Each firm then participated in a 90-minute interview on August 25th. All three firms brought their A-game teams to the table, demonstrating a strong expertise and commitment to the project. Following both the initial scoring and the post-interview scoring, LGA Engineering ranked highest in both evaluations. The panel noted that LGA demonstrated transparency, expertise, and clear understanding of the full process, which sets them apart from the competition. Now, the motion or the recommendation that the panel still brings to you is to award RFQ 2025-028 for Design Services for Camino Real International Bridge Expansion to LJA, as recommended by the evaluation panel, and authorize City Manager to negotiate a contract for professional services with final costs to be brought back to Council for approval.
Do I entertain a motion?
I motion to award.
I would like to make a comment, actually, before we do. I would just like to make sure that everyone is aware that we have worked with the different firms that have bid before, and I know they're all qualified, but I just want to emphasize the fact that we have worked in numerous projects before with LJA. I mean, I really don't understand any more reason for delaying, and with that in mind, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that, that's why we had made that we moved it to today's item. We just wanted to meet with our governor, which I did yesterday, just to exchange ideas and understand his point of view. Personally, I wanted to meet, but at the end, I mean, the end goal is to choose what the panel recommends.
That's fine. I just stand by my motion.
Was, was, was Ramon having a motion as well?
Well, actually, we all three spoke at the same time, but you already said yours.
So there is a motion?
Okay, so motion by Councilman, I mean.
She's welcome to share her comments.
No, I have this motion, but I didn't have a comment, just other than motion.
So a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Davis. Do I have a second?
I'll second whoever, it's the same motion.
Okay. Second by Councilman Garcia. Any discussion? I do want to add that, I mean, it was a very entertaining meeting that I had with our governor from Coahuila, Manolo, right? And the importance of getting this project up and running and making sure and reaffirming the commitment that we're having to making sure that this gets developed sooner rather than later, because we know the importance of, of what's happening in our surrounding area. But, I mean, he's, he's very supportive as well. Just wanted to add that.
I'm glad that you were able to meet with him, but just, just keep in mind that we have been working on this project for a couple of years now, so we need to make sure that we expedite as much as possible.
Which I would also like, if I could, get LJA, they're here, I believe. Would you mind telling us what the design and how, what else is, is to come? And deadlines and all that good stuff to come and, and getting the, the project approved? So the, so the community that, that's here can, can get a little background of what it is you guys are going to be pushing out for us?
Sure. First of all, good evening. My name is Dassio Aring, and I am the proposed project manager for this project. What we propose to do is to build an adjacent bridge, a bridge adjacent to the existing structure, six, six lanes full width, so that there's no impact to the existing bridge, or we're building this new one. In other words, traffic will continue to flow on the existing structure. There'll be no impact on that bridge. We're also going to be doing an environmental study. We'll be developing a DAP, which is a new document that the federal government is requiring now to ensure that they don't take any more additional cost.
Thank you, Dassio. My name is Melissa Montemayor with LJA. I'm a Senior VP there, and I'm also the Southwest Texas Regional Manager. I serve as your Deputy Project Manager for the design phase. I was your Project Manager for the first phase, for the presidential permit phase. Like Dassio mentioned, the presidential permit issued by President Trump had an article called Article 8. In that article, a donation acceptance proposal is required to be submitted to the federal government. So we'll be coordinating with CBP, with GSA, with USDOT, again, the same entities that we already coordinated with on the first phase. And what we have to do on this DAP is prove that there's no additional cost to the federal government in terms of, say, staffing and operations as a result of the expansion. We, you know, we're, we're very well-versed on how to do this. We, we have a team that's done this before, and we know your project. You know, we submitted your presidential permit. We came up with a conceptual design for the expansion, so we know how to prove this to the federal government, and that's what we'll, we'll start tackling first, is to get that DAP submitted as soon as possible, and then move on to, as Dassio said, to the environmental NEPA clearance, that's the National Environmental Policy Act, federal environmental clearance of the project. We'll start the schematic phase, and then on to the PSNE phase. So excited to get started, and we're going to get this open to the traveling public ASAP. Thanks, thanks so much.
Thank you, guys. And I also want to add, I mean, to the multiple individuals that submitted for this project. I mean, our City Manager could tell you, tell you how often we have been meeting and having special City Council meetings, and personally be available to meet with you guys as well, right? I mean, we all have that same mentality of, of trying to get this project up and running. But with that being said, all those in favor? Unanimous, motion passes. Item, we're going to move item next with item 13. Councilman, we're going to jump to item number 13, just to let you guys know, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have presentation, possible approval of the city of Eagle Pass's annual financial report, management letter, single audit supplement, and the governance letter for fiscal year ended in September 30th, 2024, as conducted by the firm and Allen Carter PC. Thank you, sir.
Evening, Council. You have the audit report in front of you. I'm just going to move this aside. You have the, there's a three-page There's a three-page document in front of the report. This is the required communication with governance. It summarizes the results of the audit, I'm gonna go with that first, and then we'll go into the financial audit. Under significant audit matters, there were no new accounting pronouncements or any changes in accounting policies that affect the city for fiscal year '24. Under accounting estimates, these are the same accounting estimates you've had from last year, there's no changes in your accounting estimates. On the second page, difficulties encountered in performing the audit? We had no difficulties. There's quite a lot of information requested for the audit, so I want to commend Felix and his staff for getting us all the information on a timely basis. It was a pretty short turnaround, so I do require, I do appreciate Felix and his staff and his timeliness in getting this information. Under the corrected, uncorrected misstatements, there are no uncorrected misstatements on these financial statements, all audit adjustments have been posted, those are attached on the back of this document here, adjustments 1 through 15. These are mainly year-end closing entries, and there are several prior period adjustments, and what those are basically corrections to last year's statements that I'll discuss when we get into the financial audit, but that's essentially what these adjustments are. Under disagreements with management, we had none. Any consultations with other independent accountants, we had none, there wasn't any need for any second opinions and such. And as far as findings, we had no findings with respect to the financial audit, we also conducted your single audit, your compliance audit, and we had no findings associated with that as well. With respect to the, we do have to evaluate the prior year findings, and we found that all those have been corrected. We did issue a management letter, you know, stressing the fact that these reconciliations, such as the bank reconciliations and the inter-fund reconciliations, just need to be done on a more timely manner, the, we, Felix and his staff did do these reconciliations, it just took a long effort, and that's been remedied in '25. From what I understand, Felix has already taken care of those reconciliations for '25. As far as the actual audit itself, our opinion is on page one, under the auditor's report. The first paragraph is our opinion, it is a clean opinion, these financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with U.S. accounting principles. We did have one emphasis of a matter, the prior period adjustments, which is on page 68. There was two, again, as I mentioned, prior period adjustments, one is in your governmental funds for negative $160,000, and then the other is on your business-type funds for negative $1.3 million. The majority of that, the $160,000 mainly having to do with adjustments to your accrued wages and your receivables. The majority of adjustments on the business-type funds had to do with the valuation of the landfill, you had an engineer perform an evaluation, I think in March of '25, and that value came out a lot larger than what had been previously recorded, so we had to make an adjustment for that of $950,000, which is in those list of audit adjustments. Getting back to the actual financial statements, if you go to page 16, you have your consolidated balance sheet. The statement of net position, this is a required format for government-wide basis of accounting. You have, in your primary government there, you have your governmental activities and your business-type activities. Your governmental activities are your general fund, your debt service, capital projects, special revenue funds. The business-type activities is your bridge, sanitation, and internal service fund. We're also required to disclose the component unit, the waterworks, we did not audit the waterworks, we're not given an opinion on it, but since it is a component unit, we're required to put it on your financial statements. So for fiscal year '24, you had total assets of $152.6 million. Those primarily consist of cash of $11.3 million, receivables of $2.8 million. Your inter-fund receivables, that's mainly the receivable between you guys and the waterwork system, that's $7.8 million. You also have restricted cash, and this is having to do with the capital projects of $27.7 million. And then you have your capital assets, net of depreciation of $101.4 million. The next category down is your deferred outflows of $6.2 million. You have refunding bonds of $486,000, and then you have outflows related to the pension plan of $5.7 million. Since you guys participate in the TMRS pension plan, we have to essentially true up the numbers, their plan is valued as of December, so any payments that you make subsequent to December are called prepayments or contributions into the plan, so that's what that $5.7 million consists of. Under that, you have your liabilities, you have $90.9 million in liabilities, your accounts payable is $5.4 million, compensated obstenses were $2.5 million, your long-term debt, these are your bonds, were $68.8 million, and that pension liability was $10.9 million, and your other post-employee benefits were $929,000. Under that, you have a category of inflows, these are, again, accrued expenses into the plan, since, again, the plan is valued as of December, that actual report is dated as of December, so any adjustments to the plan are additional accrued expenses, and those were $817,000. So when you apply these assets and the outflows, the prepayments against your liabilities and the additional accrued expenses, you have the category of your net position, your equity, which was $67.1 million. On pages 17 and 18 is the consolidated income statement. On page 17, far left column are your expenses. And so for the primary government, which is the city, your total expenses were $66.4 million. I'd like to add that that includes depreciation expense of $5.5 million, those are, basically, it's a non-cash, a non-budgeted item, but to arrive at your full accrual basis of accounting, you do have to include an allowance for depreciation, so that's included in there. That's something you typically don't budget, but again, for these statements, we do have to accrue it, so that's in that $66.4 million. The next two columns over are your program revenues, your charges for services were $35.4 million, operating grants and contributions were $5.4 million. On page 18, under the total column, right before the component unit, your general revenues were $22.5 million, and those primarily consist of property taxes of $9.9 million, sales taxes of $7.5 million, franchise taxes of $900,000, hotel motel taxes of $1.5 million, and you also have your investment earnings of $1.4 million. So applying the expenses against your program and your general revenues, that change in net position, it was a deficit for the year of negative $3 million. Now, again, that includes, you know, the depreciation expense of $5.5 million is included in that number, so that's your deficit for the year. I'd like to open it up for any questions you guys might have at this time.
Send you home, have any questions?
In your management letter, at the very beginning of your presentation, you made a, you alluded to the findings from the 2023 audit?
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me what was cleared?
So if you go back to the, it's listed in the financial statements, if you go back to the schedule of prior findings, that says on 80 through 82, those were the findings from last year, your transaction reporting, the accounting system, the cash, accounts payable, the self-insurance fund, capital asset accounting, and your balances due to and from the Eagle Pass Water Works, those are mainly the main findings.
When you do the audits, you usually just do everything that happened within 2024? Or you go?
Yes, we're auditing '24, but we do evaluate whether these have been corrected.
But you correct in 2025?
In '24, they were corrected, sir, yes, sir.
They were corrected in 2024?
Yes, sir. In other words, these issues were not present in '24, they had been corrected as of, for fiscal year '24.
But a corrective action plan was submitted in 2025, how would it have been corrected in 2024?
I'm sorry, your corrective?
Your corrective action plan that was submitted, correct, in 2025, how could it have been corrected in 2024? That doesn't make sense.
So normally, the findings that the auditor presents from the prior year are there to be corrected within the next fiscal year, because when we came in...
Yeah, because I know y'all started late, and I don't, I'm not trying to blame you, I just want you to...
No, no, I'm just trying to explain, how can this be corrected, and I understand your point of view, that how can we correct it if we were late or... So the corrective action begins when reconciling the accounts before the other just completed. So we were late, but we did reconcile the accounts. So if you remember, one of the findings was the investment act was not being followed, so what that means is we have, we supposed to present to council every quarter, the investment reports, that was not done in the fiscal year. So if you remember, I came in and we presented all of the four quarters for the prior year, so those were presented to you as a council. So that's an example of how, you know, we're trying to mitigate the problem by doing the corrective action within the fiscal year '23, '24, fixing all those things, so that we can get to 2024 and '25 with a clean audit. So all of those things were done, were corrected, yes, the reason why he has a management arrest, because we're not done on time. You're supposed to do it before the end of the fiscal year, or before we send the trial balance, suggest a trial balance, and that was in...
And that's why I'm stating that for you to clear it off in 2024, and it was not done to 2024, 2025, how do you clear it off?
So our report is dated September of '25, this month.
Really? I didn't realize we were in September 2025.
Yeah, so this report, right, yeah, yeah.
I get the date.
You got it, okay, so the fact that we issued this report in September 25, we evaluated all those changes, and like you said, they were late, but they were done before we released the report.
I would just think that that would have been reflected in your 2025 audit.
No, we were doing 24.
No, I mean, we're still in 2025, that's what I'm saying, once you would do it, then you would clean it up, because it got cleaned late, that's all I'm saying, I'm not saying that it's not done, I just find it odd to put something that was done after the year that you're evaluating.
Well, again, since we didn't, we didn't release this report to September 25, in other words, the, I understand your, as far as timeframe-wise, you're, the close of the fiscal year was September 24, but these trial balances weren't presented to us until August of this year.
No, I know, you were hired later, and I get that, but what I'm trying to say, it doesn't seem, I don't know, I don't wanna use the wrong word here, but I'm just gonna say that it doesn't, it doesn't seem kosher for you to clear something that's beyond the year that you're auditing. I mean, I just think it would have been reflected in the following year's audit. I think it should have still been listed on there, not that I want it to be on there, because I really don't, but at the same time, it doesn't make any sense that you're clearing something, that's something after the actual year.
So the audit was found...
That's just my humble opinion.
The audit was found on 2023. The audit findings for 2022 must be corrected on 2023, '24, which is what we did.
In 2025?
Well, we audited in 2023, '24.
Correct.
Right, but the audit wasn't complete until the September of '25?
If, if the audit was done in March, then the findings will follow for the next fiscal year. Since we completed the audit later in the year, which is in August or September, we did have enough time to correct all those issues, and the reason why we're gonna correct those now is because we don't want, you know, the agencies to look at us as somebody who is not giving compliance with normal Gatsby, you know, rules. And, you know, Jesse took a lot of work on our side, but I am proud of the finance team, because they came across and they finished it, and we all worked together to make sure that these findings were now kind of follows to 24, '25. That was a call intention. I understand that the timing wasn't the best, but this is all we had to do, and we needed to get it done. So all the issues were corrected, yes, it was on a timing matter, but it was completed. And I appreciate the support of everybody.
I just wanna make a comment, I know that we were catching up from 2023, I think we were all surprised with the findings of the 2023 audit. I know that this was a lot of hard work, and when we were discussing this about three months ago, I think that, you know, we were a little bit skeptical that it could be done on time, and I just wanna commend you for all of your work. I know that the auditing process is extremely grueling, I can't imagine what it looks like for the, to be doing the day-to-day, and so I just wanna commend you for your hard work and for getting it in on time.
Yes, thank you, Felix and your team, and the auditing team, for all the hard work you guys did. CM, do you wanna add anything?
I just wanna add, you know, just thank you very much for the support in going in the direction that we did, obviously, you know, working with the auditor through our finance department and the city departments, we were able to get this done within the deadline that we placed on ourselves, to be able to end fiscal year '25 and be able to begin, or close the year and begin the auditing process for next year, and we continue to work to make sure that we are never in this position again, to where we're completing our audits, you know, late, and we are still committed to making sure that our FY 2025 audit is completed by March, which is the deadline that we have to comply with by state law, and, you know, again, I wanna commend Mr. Felix, Mr. Carter, and the team for working hard, I know that they spent long days in our vault, you know, going through the information and the documents that were presented to them, so it couldn't have been done without the hard work of both, not only the consultant, but also our team, and it goes beyond our finance team, Mr. Felix, you could correct me, you know, it takes some of the departments to also contribute to making this audit a success, the success that it is today, so again, we're very happy to be able to present the audit before mayor and council, and we're hopeful that we can get it approved, so that we can move forward with the budget and ultimately start preparing for the FY 2025 budget, I'm sorry, audit for the following year.
Thank you, sir.
I would like to make a motion to take this item to executive session, I have a legal question.
Can we ask the public if they have any question?
I have a motion, sir.
Motion by Councilman, I mean, Mayor Pro Tem Davis, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Garcia. All those in favor? Motion goes to executive session. You wanna go now to executive session? Yeah, let's go to executive session. Okay, so we're going to executive session. The city council deserves the right to adjourn into executive session at any time during this meeting to discuss any proposed agenda items when authorized by the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, or 551.072, deliberations about real property, 551.073, deliberations about gifts and donations, 551.074, personnel matters, 551.076, deliberations about security devices, and/or 551.087, economic development. Following a closed session, the opening meeting will convene at which time action in any may be taken.
So we are taking agenda number 13 pursuant to Section 551.071.
So it's seven, zero, seven, and we're back in open session. And item thirteen? Item thirteen? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion by Councilman Diaz, do I have a second?
All second.
Second by Councilwoman Ramon, any discussions? All those in favor?
No.
No, sorry. Any discussion?
No, sorry.
All those in favor? Three, four? Any against? One against, Mr. Davis and.
Abstain.
One abstain. Motion passes. Item fourteen, consideration and possible action regarding city employees' pay plan.
Mayor, do we want to go back in order? Number six. Number six.
Okay. Item six, introductory ordinance of the City of Eagle Pass, amending Chapter 26, Article 7, Section 26, 183 of the Code of Ordinance by amending the non-commercial vehicle toll rate from $2 per axle to $2.25 per axle, or from $4 per vehicle to $4.50 per vehicle for ExpressCard or toll tag users, and $2 per axle to $3.5 per axle for, from $4 per vehicle to $7 per vehicle for cash payments.
Good evening, mayor and council. So if you'll notice, this agenda item has been, well, not this one specifically, the one that we brought before unfortunately had some discrepancies in the language, so we had to go back to introducing the change or the amendment to the Code of Ordinance for the non-commercial vehicle toll rate. What you just read, mayor, that was, I guess, an overly aggressive attempt to try to incentivize the, I guess, the customers to switch over to the ExpressCard. But after careful analyzing this proposal, I'd like to make a recommendation on behalf of city administration to return back to the original proposal of making it $5 for ExpressCard per vehicle and $6 for cash paying customers. I'd like to just reiterate that we do have some monumental projects coming for the international bridge system, and we need to start preparing financially to be able to sustain this debt when the projects do come. And we feel adding $1 to the ExpressCard and $2 to the cash paying customers will help us get these projects funded. And at the same time, we still want to add that, I guess, that edge or that savings for those individuals that choose to use the ExpressCard and not necessarily have to pay in cash and forcing us to have a person at the booth handling cash. So again, the recommendation on our behalf is to go $5 for the ExpressCard and $6 for cash paying customers. And those people that do not want to pay the $6, they're more than welcome to obtain either a ExpressCard or a toll tag for when they cross.
This is going to go through the three readings, correct?
That is correct, sir. This is only the first reading.
Any questions?
Yeah, I was going to ask you, what is the threshold for, for the minimum buy on the ExpressCards?
So currently, sir, the minimum buy at the, at the office is ten crossings. So today it is $40. So if we were to move into the new toll, it would increase $10 to $50. However, I do want to say that there is absolutely no limit to adding funding online. We will be getting a pay, a phone application for our customers to be able to load up on their card. So one of the things that we want to do is we want to make the customer more self-sufficient where they can upload online or in the card or on the phone application, I'm sorry.
So you're saying basically on the phone, there's not a limit, they can do.
They can do $10, $5, whatever they want. So yeah, we'll definitely provide those options so that the customer doesn't have to do the, the minimum at the office or at the booth. They can certainly go online or on the phone application to upload.
Can we explore an option for our senior citizens, people that are on fixed incomes like that, to see if there's like maybe a smaller level or something like that to make it? Because, I mean, $50 is a lot for someone on a fixed income.
Correct, sir. And I think that is one of the discretionary, I guess, authority that our personnel does have if, you know, they have an elderly individual or a veteran or somebody that they want to, that, you know, basically mention that they can't afford to pay the minimum. We do use discretion to allow them to put whatever they're able to do at that point in time.
I'm in a, sorry. I'm not on a sub box today, sorry, but I understand the reasons behind the increase. It just that everything else is just going up, and I understand that, and I know the money has to come from somewhere. But I think if we're a little bit more creative, instead of just raising rates all the time, there can be another way to attract more. I think if you were trying to maybe incentivize them, I know you're doing that with a $1 discrepancy in the cards, but maybe if you were to find another way that they can get, like, after X number of crossings, they get a free crossing or something like that. I don't know, I'm just throwing ideas out there that are out of the box. And the reason I'm trying to say that is to try to generate, even if you keep things at the same price structure, and you try to incentivize more crossings, you may not be getting the tolls on the bridge the way you might want the increase to be, but if you incentivize them to come and utilize the bridge, the expenses will be happening as they patronize our local merchants, and that's something that we need to also make sure that we're keeping in mind, that by raising the rates, we might be impacting negatively our downtown merchants, some of our mall merchants, our merchants all over the town. So we need to make sure that we're cautious, that we don't do something that's going to cause them from not coming, just because you're going to start putting it at a price point where some people will not be able to, will not be able to cross. So you don't want to go where you're going to go too high, and then you're going to have a negative impact, where you're going to have like less people dropping. I understand that the bridge is a user fee, and not everyone that, you know, it will not affect anyone that does not use the bridge, but for those that do, I mean, for, you know, you have, you can have a possible negative impact on commerce anytime you're raising prices like that. You need to look careful on that and, you know, some kind of a supply and demand evaluation or something like that, because at some price point, it's going to become unaffordable to be able to go.
Understood, sir.
That's just my humble suggestion.
I mean, CM, what's the reason by to put the price up?
Well, like I mentioned, we do have two very big projects that are coming up. One, just over $20 million, and the design of the new bridge structure that will be somewhere in the range of $45 to $50 million. I think ultimately, you know, that we will have to go out for some type of revenue bond through the bridge system. And I think us being able to put our fees in a position to where we can take on that debt, but at the same time, not affect the revenue stream that's already coming to the City of Eagle Pass to sustain other operations and other projects, is more practical than us keeping the fees the same and then having to look at other types of revenue increases, which, you know, could be, you know, taxes, or could be increases in other fees like solid waste. So we do want to make sure that we are as fair as we possibly can in being able to maintain the ongoing operations and the ongoing projects that the bridge currently funds for the city, and at the same time, be able to fund its own projects on its own.
Excellent. Any other questions?
So just to make it clear, it's five for car holders and six for non-card holders, right?
For cash paying customers, that is correct, sir. That's our recommendation.
And this is the first reading of three, right?
Yeah, so this is the first reading of three. And what we can do is, if Mr., if Mayor Pro Tem Davis would like for us to, just, because just kind of, I guess, for the record, I'm sure mayor and council, or at least former mayor and council are aware, during the holidays, we do increase the fees to pay for the 24-hour operation. So we have never witnessed, you know, traffic to dip because of that. Obviously, we're providing a benefit for that. I think it would be a good idea to consider us to include the 24-hour service and not having to do that temporary increase, and that would just pretty much give us 10 months of a new rate versus, you know, what we were proposing in the past.
So there won't be a Christmas increase?
That's one way that I'm saying that maybe we can make it a little bit more enticing. And we can still maintain the 24-hour bridge operation, but just use the funding that we're already going to be gaining from this increase to cover that for this year.
Any more questions? Can I entertain a motion?
I motion to approve.
Motion by Councilwoman Ramon, do I have a second? All second. Second by Councilman Diaz. Any discussion? All those in favor? Four?
I abstain.
You abstain, and Councilman, and Mayor Pro Tem Davis will abstain. Motion passes. We have our item number seven, third and final reading of an ordinance approving and adopting the budget of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas for the 2025, 2026 fiscal year and establishing procedures of formal approval by September 16, 2025.
My eyes are.
Good evening, mayor and council. What I'm bringing to you today is a new proposed budget, and want to begin by apologizing to you for not sending it to you earlier. The reason is because we were listening to the input that we received last time, last week, and one of the things that we hear loud and clear is that you want us to come to you with proposals where you can take an action. One of the things that we were listening is that you wanted us to go back and recalculate the raises one percentage across the board. We did that. So last week, I began to work on the numbers again, tried to come up with a, an increase that will make sense to everybody, but also that it will be feasible within the parameters that we have or the revenues that we are collecting for this coming fiscal year, that we are projecting for these coming fiscal years. So in front of you, you have a skinny budget book, and the reason why it's skinny because this time we did a double-sided. So you have this, this is the new one that I'm proposing. And then you have this booklet that explains what is different from the one that we worked on last week. So if you look at the first page, well, the second page actually, on the booklet that you have in front of you, is a summary of all the funds. These changes, a 3.5 increase across the board for all employees, this is what they impact into the budget. So in September 9, I came to you and I showed you a surplus of $399,237.
If I can ask you, if you can follow along with the PowerPoint, just so the people watching can follow along as well.
Thank you for reminding me. So as you can see here, it's $399,237. If we approve a 3.5% increase across the board to all employees, it's going to be an increase on the expenses of $255,841. What this is going to do is going to reduce our surplus from $399,000 to $143,000. I do want to let you know that the 3.5 is, the reason why we came across this fund, this amount, is because some of the employees who are in the lower pay scale, they, that's why much they will get a 3.5. So that's why we are proposing this. It will be across the board. Everybody will get the same amount, and it's going to be more equitable to everybody. If you go to the next page, this is a summary of how the changes are going to be in every fund. So if you look on the top, the Fund General Fund, it's going to be an increase on the expense by $197,000. The Public Library, $8,675. The Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority, $5,543. The HIDA is $1,348. Recreation Programs, $3,981. Main Street Fund, $1,246. Commissioned Cemetery Smooth Fund, $3,089. The International Bridge System, $10,898. And Environmental Solid Waste Fund, $23,392.
Mr. Felix, can you please use the PowerPoint?
Sorry. Can you repeat that, sir?
No, just if you could be using the PowerPoint.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes. I get too excited with the.
Just so people online may be able to see.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you so much. So the next item is, last week, we were talking about the contributions to other organizations, and again, we were listening clearly about what you want us to do. Now, I'm not proposing changes to what I proposed originally on the first time, and the reason is because we needed the money to offset for the raise for the 3.5. So my. So my proposal to you is keep the numbers the way they are, a hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-five-hundred for the whole year. So meaning that District Attorney will get an increase of five thousand, and we're gonna keep so at a twenty-five. The Organization for Disaster Relief will continue to be at fifteen thousand. The Veterans will get an increase of five thousand. Beta will get an increase of five hundred dollars. And the Council Discretion will remain the same. And the MCHD Foundation will receive what they are requesting, which is twenty-five-hundred dollars. That is what I am proposing to you. I visited with CM and Assistant CM, and the three of us agreed that this probably the best route to go. On the next one is in regards to the Property Improvement Project List. Uh, again, we met, and this is what we have decided. I think we're proposing to you that we wanna keep the ranking the same way that the panel, uh, had this, had decided. Uh, and the reason is because the ranking that we have is very similar to what the public was, uh, proposing to us. So I'm open for any questions. This concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Felix.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions for, from the camp?
Felix, on September nine, we, you said we're gonna have almost four-hundred-thousand worth of deficit, and then now the deficit's gonna, gonna be less?
It's gonna be one-forty-three.
Even, even giving everybody a straight, across-the-board raise?
So what I did is, I used the monies from the bridge to do transfers, so that we can suffice for the expense.
Okay. No, no. So, but we are gonna be at a, at a...
No, the surplus is gonna be one-forty-three, not the deficit.
That's a surplus.
It's a surplus.
Well, let me give you a little bit more surplus.
I want that.
For two years, we had been advertising or approved the Assistant City Manager position, and it wasn't, was never advertised or anything by any sort. So if possible, remove that one.
Okay.
And leave it to one Assistant and one City Manager. I know Bailey wasn't very fond of it back then when, when we suggested it, but at this point, it didn't move for two years, so save, save that money.
If you approve that tonight, and, and that's one of the things you want me to do, what I would do, I will go back, remove that one, and that would increase the surplus, but whatever amount the salary is. So what I would do, I would send out a new budget book to everybody and give the Secretary the new, uh, approved budget. So Valerie's taking us, we'll take, uh, action tomorrow morning.
And like every year, when it comes to budget, make sure that the job or the opening that they're requesting is really ne- necessary, right? Don't just, cuz it's there, go ahead and fill it. Make sure that you're moving your pieces around. Like you said earlier, you wanna do that evaluation. But...
So one of the things that we are, uh, looking to do next fiscal year is, I visited with the City Manager and Assistant City Manager, we're gonna implement a personnel request form. And what this is gonna do, we ask the directors to give us a job description, a justification for the requests they're doing. It's gonna go to CM and Assistant CM. They will review it, and if they say it's okay, then it goes to Human Resources, so they can grade it, and then it's gonna come to Finance. So the three of us, Administration, HR, and Finance, at that time, we evaluate, is this really necessary? And then we'll come back to the panel, and you will decide whether you agree with us or not. But that's one of the things that we are trying to implement for next fiscal year.
And another question real quick, uh, Felix, on, on, when it comes to the General Fund for Police there, I, I saw a decrease from Police Chief and Assistant Police Chief. Is that because of the salaries of the previous chiefs, or, or, or are we lowering the salary?
We just have a vacancy that hasn't been filled.
Okay, but it, it, it's because of that, right? The, the previous assistant or the previous chief added?
Right. So normally what we do is, if there is a vacancy in existence, okay, let me take two steps back. The Chief of Police was here, right? He, he resigned. So he was, let's say, at grade twenty, uh, step four or five. When that position becomes vacant, we take that to twenty-one. So you're gonna see those savings, because since that person is no longer here, whoever we hire, we calculate it at step one. And that's what the city has been doing for a long time. I think it's a good practice, you know, cuz we don't know what kinda credentials or qualifications they're gonna come. So there's no reason for us to budget at twenty-five when I can do twenty-one.
Okay, but then, just to clarify, no, no salaries were decreased, right?
No, sir.
Okay.
Uh, I think going back to the Assistant Managers, uh, the Assistant City Manager position, uh, I was one of the, uh, councilpeople that was very much pro, uh, adding more organizational infrastructure at the beginning. As time went on, and I, I agree with Councilman Garcia that, you know, that those vacancies have not been filled, right? I think we're going on, we just closed out the second fiscal year that it had been on the budget. Um, in recent times, I've been having ongoing conversations, um, uh, about operational efficiency. Anybody that knows me, uh, I think if you work a little bit too closely with me, you might get annoyed with how, uh, much I, I, I preach on organizational efficiency. And so I was skeptical about, uh, whether we needed that position or not. At this point, I, I don't, I'm not comfortable with removing it completely. Uh, I think that, you know, there are operational improvements to be made as we, as it relates to, uh, you know, how time is being spent between, uh, the executive level, down to the director level, down to frontline staff. Uh, but I think at this point, uh, just removing it completely, um, I, I, I'm not comfortable with that at this point. I would like to continue to explore it. I don't know how the rest of council feels.
I completely agree. I mean, if anything, now with the expansion of the bridge and, and all the infrastructure that's being, uh, put into our operations, I need to make sure that, uh, our CM has the right elements within the organization to develop these projects and plans that we have as, as council. I mean, if anything, I mean, I, I don't know if you wanna add to, to what, what that question might be.
I think ultimately, well, as we all know, the city is growing. The responsibilities of the city to the constituents continue to grow as the community grows. We do have some major projects that are coming, and, and ultimately, having the right team in place, not only at administration, but also at the director level, will definitely help us continue to improve and become more efficient. Um, do I feel that, uh, a second Assi- Assistant City Manager could certainly help make things more efficient? Of course. I think that when it comes to this level, being able to have more eyes on the projects, more eyes on the departments, making sure that they're producing the way that, that they're meant to produce, can certainly be a benefit to the community. Um, I think, uh, and, and it's been one year that it was added. I believe last year was the first budget that we actually added it. And, um, I think ultimately, not moving forward with adding that person was trying to ensure that the position was needed. And I can say, after just over a year of being a Ci- uh, City Manager, I can, I can be honest and say that having a, an additional Assistant City Manager would certainly help achieve some of the expectations that mayor and council are putting before city administration.
Thank you, Madam. And what was the other one that you, you mentioned, uh, for the police department?
Oh, no, that was just to see, because there was a salary, it went from one-fourteen to a one-oh-four, so just making sure that the salaries weren't lowered because of, oh, they were lowered because new personnel. You know, it didn't include the new increases from the previous chief, let's say, see it that way. So, and, and that's what...
Also, yeah, that, 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 that increase is pending, right?
Right. As they come along, that, that salary will, yeah. But tha- that was the old one. Like, the, the previous chief was at a high, pretty much, and the high was at one-fourteen. So the new chief is at a one-oh-four right now.
One-oh-four.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I do wanna express that I feel that, I mean, with current operations, I, I would recommend, um, our chief to be compensated equally. That's just my, my opinion, cuz of the workload, that everything's, uh, be, with the, with the necessary help possible and, and, uh, inner staff.
And if anything, mayor, um, if we are gonna get a, a second assistant, I would expect the CM to please be more available within the city.
More available in what sense?
More available as in more presence.
To staff or to us?
To staff. More presence within the city, City Hall itself.
You feel that he's, he's not...
He's out too much.
Okay. I mean, we'll definitely consider that. I personally, I mean, a personal matter, I, I try to be as involved as I, I can.
Oh, I know, I know you are.
And, and in a daily basis, and, and after every single department. But, I mean, I'll, I'll look into it as well. I mean, just being there, being available, I, how could you evaluate, I mean, how would you wanna evaluate that?
To have presence within. We have been out to major, major, uh, trips, which you have been accounted for, you haven't been, you had, they have asked for you, et cetera, et cetera. So that, those would be things that are of importance to the city, which you must attend. Uh, your priority should be the city, in this case. So...
Okay. I mean, we'll definitely look into that.
Noted.
Appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Could we get like, um, I guess maybe, I mean, I know it's on the budget right now, but I would like an actual proposal to see how you would el- delineate the, or delineate the responsibilities of the, if you were to have an Assistant City Manager, and to show me how you would become more efficient, and to understand what are the goals, because I, I would like to see some of yourself-imposed goals from you as a administrator.
That can be done, sir. Yes.
I mean, I'm just based on what you were saying, I'm just trying to, just line it out for us.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Garcia. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Diaz. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Is it the full budget or just the?
Which one?
We're doing the full budget or just the?
No.
The transfers to others? Let's see, I don't know if I saw it lined, lined ever differently, I'm sorry.
The whole budget.
It is the whole budget, sir. Okay, um, any discussion?
Just for clarification, we are approving as presented by Mr. Castillo, correct?
Correct.
Yes. All those in favor? Unanimous, motion passes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, council.
Item eight, consideration and ratification of property tax revenue increase as reflected on the adopted City of Eagle Pass budget for the fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-six.
Good afternoon, mayor. Uh, this is just, uh, protocol, because we are having an increase in the revenues from last year.
Okay, um, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the budget, which totals a tax rate of point forty-eight zero-zero fifty-two over the a hundred-dollar value for the tax year twenty-twenty-five. Can you just explain real quick, I mean, I made the motion, but it says increase, just so it could be noted to the public?
This is for number seven.
Eight. Oh, okay. Number seven? I thought you mentioned for me to go to number eight.
Yes, number eight.
It's number eight.
For the ratification.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's, that's, uh, just protocol, because we're having an increase. So that's a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
It's the first one, to ratify the property tax revenue.
Correct. Okay.
So, mayor, the increase of the tax, uh, has to do with the valuations that the Bridge District gave to us. Uh, is, there's more taxing, taxing rate increase, but the values will increase, uh, sliding because of the valuations.
Mid of the property rules.
Property values.
Just wanted, for it to be case. Thank you. I just wanted to be noted. Okay, so motion. Do I have a second? Second by, um, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, Davis. Do I have any discussion? Oh, I have, it says, I have to...
He made the motion, I'll second.
Oh, you meant, okay.
Yeah, that's...
Okay. Any discussions? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion passes. Now we have the third and final reading of the ordinance for the adoption of the tax rate of point forty-eight zero-zero five-two for the a hundred-dollar value for tax year twenty-twenty-five. The tax rate will provide revenue for the general funds and the debt service. The rate will include, include point twenty-eight forty-two fifty-seven per a hundred dollar value of maintenance and operations, and point nineteen fifty-seven ninety-five per a hundred dollar value of interest and, and skinning funds of the debt service, and is estimated to generate a tax levy of a hu- eleven million, nine-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty. I motion, uh, that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of point forty-eight zero-zero five-two, which is effectively a five-point-zero percent increase in the tax rate. And if you could also just mention, this is not a...
Yes, but, uh, just for clarification, this is, uh, there's no tax rate increase. This is the same tax rate as last year.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion?
I make the motion. I'll, I'll move to, to approve the, the tax rate. Do you mean, do you make, uh, I don't like getting speed.
No, no, I, I made the motion.
Oh, well, I'll second the motion.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Davis. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, motion passes. Do you wanna?
Yes.
Read that?
The adopted tax rate is, uh, point twenty-eight forty-two fifty-seven over a hundred-dollar value for the purpose of maintenance and operations. Uh, point nineteen fifty-seven ninety-five over a hundred-dollar value for the payment of principal and interest on debt of the city. Uh, point forty-eight zero-zero fifty-two over a hundred, that's the total tax rate for twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Now we go.
I'm sorry. Can we just have a record vote for the, for item number nine, please? If everybody could just state their name, those that voted in favor.
Mayor Aron Valdez, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, Mr. Davis, and...
Would you want us to state ourselves, or what?
Yeah, you could say yourselves.
Was I, I don't know what that, well, did, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Davis in favor?
Councilman Garcia in favor?
Councilman Elia Diaz in favor. Mayor Valdez in favor.
Councilwoman Ramon in favor.
Thank you.
Item ten, consideration and possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas to appoint members of the Eagle Pass Public Library Board.
Mayor and council for this item, I believe, it wants to be tabled?
Yes. We need to make a motion.
Do you have a motion to table this item?
We have a motion by Councilman Garcia, uh, second by Mayor Pro Tim, uh, Davis.
For all of us?
Well, listen to you.
So we can bring it back to the next meeting, and we can all, um...
I mean, if you wanna state whoever you want, I guess, I don't know, I was just told it was gonna be tabled, so I didn't even confirm.
I was prepared, that's why I asked you. But you could, I mean...
You can state your person if you want.
I just wanna reappoint my, my board member, which is Clelia Delgado Valdez.
If it's okay, can, um, I note the name down and bring it on the next meeting, so it can be uniformed?
Okay.
Exactly. Okay.
Okay.
We have a motion to table the item, and...
Okay.
Will you let us know, like, if the ones that we have are termed out, or?
Yes, I did send each and every...
I wanted to make sure, cuz I think you did, but I wasn't sure if I was able to get, open it. Okay. I'll, I'll try again on my, my desktop was, they serviced it, so maybe I'll be able to open it now. I'll try it at home.
Of course. I could send that reminder email with your current appointee, and, uh, I can advise in that email as well, if they're able to, um, be appointed again for this term.
Okay.
So we had a second.
Yes, miss.
All those in favor? Unanimous, motion passes to be tabled, or, um, item tabled. And then we go to item eleven, consideration and possible approval of the resolution of City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, appointing members of the Eagle Pass Animal Welfare Board. We also ask to table this item as well.
Okay.
So, move. Motion by, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Davis, second by Councilman Garcia. All those in favor? Okay?
Sorry, there, Elia is to see if he's gonna say something. Sorry. No offense.
Okay, item twelve, consideration and possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, designation methods, address, and locations for receiving public information requests and providing an effective date.
Good evening, mayor and council. For this resolution, so House Bill forty-two fourteen became effective on June twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. This bill requires that each government body, no later than October the first of each year, to notify the Office of the Attorney, Attorney Generals of the current mailing address and, uh, an electronic mailing address by the government body under subsection five-five-two dot three-four C for receiving reading requests for public information. So... So this resolution would outline that information to the attorney generals, and we have to present it as required by law now to the attorney general's office. So it just pretty much outlines the details, the details for submitting public information requests.
So we need a motion. So moved.
Uh, motion by Mayor Potem Davis, do I have a second, second by Councilman Garcia, any discussion, all those in favor? Unanimous, motion passes. We go to item fourteen, consideration and possible action regarding city employee pay plan.
Good evening, mayor and council, so this is just, uh, we wanted to make it a formal action regarding the removal of the fourteen-step pay plan. And with this also, mayor and council will have discretion on what, um, percentage uh, the annual compensation increase would be for, uh, the staff across the board. And, uh, this would also include the merit base increase for, uh, directors only.
Questions? Questions?
You have a question?
Yeah.
So, uh, just to clarify, the, the merit-based incentive would just be for the directors? And then all across the board for everybody else?
That is correct, on, based on the approved percentage amount that mayor and council approved. So in this case, we, you just approved a three point five for FY twenty-six? So then in twenty-seven, you would be able to determine whether you want to keep it at three point five, or you want to bring it down or increase it?
Where's that cola?
What's cola, two point?
Cost of living.
No, I know.
That's how it all.
And, but cola amounts to three point five?
No, it can be whatever, I mean, we can.
So what's cola right now?
It's two point right now, but you can change, it can be cola plus two percent or whatever.
So.
No, you set the number.
Should we go with your question? Okay, um, and this one, I guess, would be for the attorney. On the contract for Mr. Valdez, we didn't, we did not include an increase, uh, ever. Would this, or could we also add it to his contract if anything, that, or can we amend his contract?
We usually do it, we usually do it when it's, he's being evaluated, that's when you do the consideration.
But since we give him all other benefits that the city already gets, just to include him as part of, of this, as a fourteen, as, as a scale.
I don't know if he follows under the same scale, he's not, it's, it's sort of like all the ones that are appointed by council.
Right, those contract-based employees are not on the pay grade, on the pay scale, but we can amend his contract and add that percentage for this year, or if you want to say for the term of his agreement, every year, subsequent year, if anybody else gets a raise, he would get the raise as well. It's up to you. We could bring in at the October meeting, the amendment for his contract?
There you go, okay.
I'm absolutely fine with it, our mayor and council decides, I have no problem with the merit-based, uh, evaluation, and that would determine whether I get more or not, I have no problem with that.
Well, I don't think merit base goes under you, like, I think it's only directors, right?
It's only, only directors, but I think he means like if we suggest something.
I am currently based on evaluation anyway, so.
Yeah, I mean, yours is somewhat merit-based. I mean, it's evaluation, I mean, sorry, but yeah.
Hey, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Garcia.
We're approving.
We're approving, uh, this right here, the pay scale, and then in October, we'll bring up the other item.
So it's not the merit-based?
Not.
It's everything.
This is my, this is my computer blanked out, that's why, I was just like, I have a sun in my computer now.
Well, the, the merit-based.
You know, I know what I just did, sorry.
Yes, so it's merit-based for directors only, removal of the fourteen-step, uh, compensation plan, so there'd be no cap. Um, and then the other one would be, be all across the board, mayor and council would dictate what the percentage base would be, whether it's like you said, cola plus one, or.
So you're gonna try to pass it all at once, under one thing, okay.
Correct.
I second.
Second by Councilwoman Ramon, any discussion?
Uh, personally, I would rather like to take them separately, but that's fine, everyone to package it all together, that's fine. That's just my comment.
All those in favor?
I'll abstain.
Okay, we have four, favor and, uh, Airport Tim Davis abstained, motion passes. Item fifteen, consideration and possible approval to allow city manager to execute an agreement contract between the City of Eagle Pass and Del Carmen Consulting LLC for racial profiling compliance audit service for the amount not to exceed sixty-four thousand fifty dollars.
Uh, good evening, mayor and council, administration. So as part of my commitment to accountability and continuous improvement for the Eagle Pass Police Department, uh, I've initiated several internal audits across several areas of police department, uh, including a review of our data and reporting practices. One of our initial assessments conducted by Dr. Del Carmen from, and his consulting firm, indicated that our department is not yet in full compliance with state requirements regarding racial profiling, uh, reports and recommended to be addressed promptly. Uh, with the guidance of our city attorney, and of course, support of our municipal, uh, court, we're already on track to achieving the compliance. Uh, but once the consulting company gets approved, and it begins assisting us, I'll report the outcome, uh, progress back to city council. And it's sixty-four thousand based, uh, five-year plan, so within five years, it's what the, what the contract will, will assist us with. And so basically, we'll be reporting the racial profiling, uh, more transparent.
Or, or, what? How do we get to, or what do you mean by more transparent?
So, um, when an officer issues out a citation, they have to indicate what ethnicity and race, uh, they are detaining. And in this situation, uh, we did a, an assessment where we were not in compliance in, in placing the right race or ethnicity on the initial stop. So, um, the consulting company wants us to address two years back, uh, which is, uh, twenty-three and twenty-four, and then continue twenty-five and on, so that we can be in compliance with our reporting.
So every time an officer stops, yeah, I've been stopped, yeah.
Yes. And, and it's just, uh, internal audits, again, uh, I'm doing internal audits in the department, and this is one of them that needs to be done, and this company will also do, uh, random, uh, data audits with our, uh, municipal court or our, our system, uh, to include body worn camera audits, which is they'll randomly do audit checks and then report to me, and then I'll be able to assess any due on-spot corrections if we need to.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Very good.
So, um, chief, I just want to commend you on your level of integrity. I know, bringing something to council, uh, where, you know, you're reporting on something that's non-compliance. I just, I, I think it's, it's very honorable of you to bring this to our attention. And I love that you didn't just bring us a problem, that you brought us a solution. So you came with a plan of action, and I really want to commend you on, on that. Um, I think that, you know, a lot of what, uh, well, is part of that time period that you're describing, it falls on, you know, previous administration. But there was no mention of previous administration, there was mention of, this is what we're gonna do to correct it. Um, and so I think, I speak for all of us on council, you know, it, we don't expect, uh, you know, things to run perfect or a hundred percent smoothly all the time. But we do want to know that we are working as a team, us with oversight and our, our directors, uh, with being our boots on the ground, that, that really make things happen. And so I just want to publicly commend you for that, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that, thank you so much.
That is true, I, I gotta follow up on Elias, it, it's better to come up with a problem or, and let us fix it, or like you did, you brought it up and fixed it, than trying to throw it under the rug and paying, paying for it later, so. And that, that, that pretty much should set the example for all our departments, you know, don't, don't let it go under, but bring it afloat and fix it now before it's too late. So, yes, like Elias said.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Can I entertain a motion?
Motion for approval?
Motion by Councilwoman Ramon, second by Councilman Garcia, any discussion, all those in favor? Unanimous, motion passes. Item seventeen, consideration and possible approval to allow city manager to execute agreement with organizations receiving financial contributions from the City of Eagle Pass to verify compliance with public purpose and accountability for the pur- purpose of the funds.
Good evening, mayor and council, I have provided a copy of, uh, MOU that I created. This is the one for the DA's office, but there will be one for each applicant, and I have copies of those, I just didn't bring seven of each. But this is, um, if you all can allow the city manager to execute this agreement um, with each entity that asks for contributions, and the amount will be reflected, um, as approved today. The contribution amounts would be reflected on the MOU. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
I don't have a question, I just, uh, have a comment. Uh, I think that this is, as we think about growth and what we want to do, especially what we want to do with our funds, right? We all know that when we apply for grants, um, and, and, and any of us that have participated in any of the grant process, there's deliverables. And so I think this is great, and I want to thank you all. I know that I was a little militant about this process, but I, I, I really think that, uh, you know, it, it will help align the entire city to a strategy, right? And so if we're giving out funds, it'll give us the opportunity to, to, to maximize those dollars instead of just subsidizing other entities.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Discussions? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Diaz, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Garcia, any discussion, all those in favor?
Yes, I'm ready to change.
Okay, all right.
Yes, that's why I said, as, as approved today.
Okay, all right.
All those in favor? Unanimous, motion passes, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilman Garcia, do I have a second? Second by Councilman Diaz, all those in favor? Unanimous.